Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to our city council meeting, City of Mableton. This is June 5th, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mayor Owens.
President.
Councilmember Ron Davis, District 1.
President.
Councilmember Dami Oladapo, District 2.
Present.
Councilmember, Mayor Protem Keisha Jeffcoat for District 3.
Present.
Councilmember Patricia Outt, District 4.
Present.
And Councilmember T.J. Ferguson, District 5.
Present.
And Deborah Herndon, District 6.
Present.
And we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let the record state that we started the call to order was at 6:48. With that being said, Councilman Davis, would you lead us in the vocation, please, sir?
I'd love to spray. Heavenly Father, Most High God, we thank you, Father, for your grace. We thank you for your mercy. We thank you for each and every day you give us, Father God. We pray right now that your mighty hand come and touch each of these residents, each of these council members. Father, give us the wisdom to rule as you would have us to rule, Father, with integrity, Father God, with wisdom, with strength, Father God, with decisiveness and unity, Father. We thank you for this, this community, Father God, this city called Mableton. And we pray, Father God, that you just guide us in every way that we should walk in it. We thank you, we praise you, and we honor you. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Councilman. Mayor Protem Jeffcoat, proud Army veteran.
Cool.
Proud Army veteran.
Go Navy.
Councilwoman Jeffcoat, would you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Sure.
Stand if you can, please.
Our Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, you've all been presented with our agenda packet. It's quite lengthy this week. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda packet as written.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Here in opposition, we'll move right along to item six. Item six is our presentations, acknowledgements, and proclamations. We have, we do have a couple this evening. To, to start off the acknowledgements, though, I do want to acknowledge the newest staff member for the City of Mableton. City of Mableton now has an executive assistant. This is the second executive assistant that was passed last year, and that is Ms. Allison Benson. She's back there in the back. Welcome, Allison. She's hit the ground running already, has already proven her worth, if you will, jumping right in with some of the things we have going on and assistance over the weekend. And I was in the office this week, and she was, she was on it. So we've got, we've got a great talent and someone really willing to jump in and help the city. For the next item, I would like to have a proclamation that comes from our county, from Cobb County. And with that, I'd like to have our county commissioner, Monique Sheffield, please join us.
Thank you. Thank you all so much, and it's a pleasure to see so many of you in the place this evening. I am just bringing a proclamation on behalf of the Board of Commissioners to say happy birthday to you all and to proclaim that you are celebrating a one-year anniversary. And I'll make additional proclamations within this document. So here we go. Whereas, sorry.
Turn up our stuff.
Yeah, that's for the blooper reel, just in case. Okay, whereas, the original Mableton, named after plantation owner Robert Mabel, was incorporated in 1912 but gave up its charter in 1916 as part of flood recovery efforts. The area has long served as a historic and cultural centerpiece with such touchstones as the Mabel House, the Mabel House Amphitheater, and Six Flags Over Georgia, attracting visitors from throughout the nation. And whereas, the incorporation of the new city of Mableton passed by referendum in November 2022 and became officially incorporated on January 1st, 2023, creating Cobb's largest city, stretching through most of South Cobb with an estimated population of 78,000 residents. And whereas, the new city held its election the following March and runoff in April, resulting in the placement of Mayor Michael Owens, District 1 Councilman Ron Davis, District 2 Councilwoman Dami Oladapo, District 3 Councilwoman Keisha Jeffcoat, District 4 Councilwoman Patricia Outt, District 5 Councilman T.J. Ferguson, and District 6 Councilwoman Deborah Herndon. And whereas, Mableton proudly holds the distinction of being the largest city in Cobb County, reflecting dynamic growth in a vibrant community spirit. In just one year, Mableton has rapidly established itself as a city of great promise and potential. And whereas, the mayor and council have also overseen the onboarding of finance consultant Frank Malazi, city manager William Tanks, city attorney Amelia Walker Ashby, city clerk Susan Hoyt, executive assistant to the mayor Lily Smith, and executive assistant to council and office manager Allison Benson. And whereas, all mayor and city council members, appointees, and staff have been working with Cobb County officials to provide a seamless transition of service to its residents. Therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, commemorate the first anniversary of Mableton's incorporation as a city, celebrating a milestone and quickly cementing its place among our great cities, this the fifth day of June 2024. Mayor, if you wouldn't mind, would you want to come up and accept?
I know that was pretty long, but it's definitely better than saying happy birthday. Congratulations.
I know that was pretty long, but it's definitely better than saying happy birthday. Say you both, congratulations. Thank you.
That can go up in our new building.
And in addition to this amazing proclamation from our county commissioner, we do have a letter, a congratulations letter, from the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And we have Representative Board Cassandra Brown here, I think. Cassandra, would you step forward and please read the letter?
Thank you. Bringing you all greetings from the Mableton Improvement Coalition. Also, I want to send apologies from our president, Nate Smith, who could not be here today. So Honorable Mayor Michael Owens, city council members Davis, Oladapo, Jeffcoat, Outt, Ferguson, and Herndon, congratulations on our first year as the city of Mableton. One year ago, you embarked on a remarkable journey to establish Mableton as a beacon of self-governance and local empowerment. Today, we celebrate the first anniversary of our new city, now the largest in Cobb County, with a diverse population of over 79,000 residents. The journey was not without its challenges. In the beginning, some were skeptical of the need for cityhood, happy to leave things as they are. Yet through the tireless efforts of our mayor and city council, the benefits of local governance have been made clear. We have seen and heard firsthand the advantages of having a city tailored to our unique needs and aspirations. The establishment of Mableton as a city was a bold declaration of our community's values and vision for the future. It was a commitment to invest our time, talent, resources into building the mechanisms of a successful city. Our hope is that Mayor Owens and our six council members will exemplify what it means to work collaboratively, setting a course for smart growth and sustainable development that will benefit generations to come. As we reflect on this past year, we recognize the milestones that have been achieved and the obstacles that were overcome. We are hopeful that the groundwork is being laid for a city that is not only administratively efficient, but also a place where every resident can thrive. On behalf of the Mableton Improvement Coalition, I express our deepest gratitude to everyone who has played a part in this historic endeavor. Your dedication to the cause of Mableton cityhood has been nothing short of inspiring. Here is to many more years of progress, unity, and prosperity. Happy first anniversary, Mableton.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Definitely do appreciate that. So this wraps the presentation, acknowledgement, proclamation for today. Item seven is appointments. We do not have any more appointments, but I am, I do want to touch on, I think we'll talk about this more in the comments, I'm sure people will have some. But I do want to acknowledge the things that we've gotten for first year anniversary, as many of you, as I look out across the audience, did take part in our first year anniversary. That was a grouping of four, four events, we'll say, over four different days of last week. And so I do want to acknowledge that the proclamation, from there, we did receive two other proclamations, one from State Representative Terry Cummings, and also a congratulatory letter from our United States Senator, Mr. Raphael Warnock. So those will be presented at our next council meeting, just to let you guys know. So with that, let's go to public comments. Madam Clerk, do you have any public comment cards?
Yes, I have several cards here. I want to remind everybody, it's a two-minute time limit to allow other people to speak and also so we can get, get on with the business of the city. And please state your name and what district you live in. Some of the cards do have districts on them, some don't. So if you would, say your district. The first person is Jeff Pageant, and after Jeff is Sonia Wheatley. And there's a two-minute time limit. Thank you.
Try to be brave. Come on, Jeff. No, I want to start something new here for the citizens of Mableton. You always hear negativity every week and stuff like that, and I just want to start telling you all some positive stuff that goes on weekly around here in Mableton that a lot of people don't know. And if I can find my notes, I'll tell you what it is here. First of all, congratulations on the city of Mableton. We had a ball this weekend, didn't we? It was, it was a lot of work in them four days, you know, but we got it done. I went up there, you know, I went to that senior citizens thing thinking, well, you know, maybe some possibilities, you know, lady friends up here or something. Now, I realize I'm not a senior citizen yet, so I'm just not there yet. So I still got a lot of young years left of me. But anyway, I just want to tell you all about, we didn't have a Dr. Mile on Saturday this week because of the Mableton Day. But, but Sunday, Berry Cribbs got out there with the Boy Scout troop number 22, and this was their first ever Dr. Mile, they done over on Cooper Lake Road. They had 17 bags of trash picked up, and they, you know, them boys had a good time, and they really had a good time out there. And it's good to get out there and teach these young folks about this and get their awareness out so they can, you know, when they're riding down the road and they get their car, they won't be throwing trash out. And, you know, and Lions Club, you know, Lions Club volunteered at their, at the, you know, that Mableton Day, you know, we had a good time out there and volunteered, and I ended up finishing last in the race. So next year, I'll try to be first. I'm going to work on it next year. And, but, you know, Lions Club does a lot of work here in the community, and if y'all ever have any old glasses, you know, or any glass cases, please let us know, and we'd like to take them because we can use them, you know, it helps us with the, because, you know, we do a lot of work with kids with vision. And, and we get out here and do our trash pickups, and we also work with, with people in need, these food ministries, and Sweetwater Mission, and so on. So y'all just keep us in your mind. Thank you. I don't know if my two minutes is up or what, but I'm out of here.
Okay, Sonia Wheatley of District 3, and after Sonia is Pat Burns.
Hi, I'm Sonia Wheatley. I am in District 3, and I want, I'm here specifically to really talk about the Urban Redevelopment Authority proposal. I have to say, I'm a bit hot about this. I know that you guys are, have a hard job ahead of you. You've, you've done a lot, but I honestly think it's time to focus in on what the charter is. The charter is sanitation and code enforcement. It is planning, it's code enforcement. What it's not is picking a property that is wooded, that is undeveloped, and trying to purchase it under the guise of it being blighted. I don't know what the goal is. If you want to buy property that potentially could be used for city property, then be honest about it. Trying to say that you want it because it's blighted, it is an undeveloped wooded parcel, the other one is stubbed out for a subdivision. My concern, and the reason I am so hot about it, is because you guys are not land barons. You don't get to use the city's money to purchase property and decide what you want done with it. If it's blighted, if it's too small, if it is a true blight, and eyesore, burned out, dangerous, those are parcels that are eligible. But what you can't get into the business of doing is trying to dictate, you're not developers. You don't get to buy property, you don't get to plan it. That is for the private world, not for a city to take care of. So I strongly urge you to reconsider this and just your general plan. Focus on what you need to do. You've got a lot of work ahead of you. You guys have been doing that, but your swim lane is code enforcement, sanitation, parks and rec, and zoning. It is not trying to be land barons. So please think about that as you move forward.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pat Burns. I'm a member, excuse me, I'm a member of the Friends of the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District. Toni Morrison, the Nobel Laureate author, once mused, and I'm paraphrasing, "There is no small bench by the side of the road for me to sit to contemplate the enslaved whose lives passed through and by this location." From these musings, the Toni Morrison Society began to place benches in revered and significant locations. Friends of the Historic District have been awarded a Toni Morrison Bench in recognition of a once enslaved woman by the name of Matilda Ruff and her family. It will be placed in the Covered Bridge Historic District on a slip of green space near the entrance to the Silver Comet Trail on Concord Road. The green space will henceforth be known as Matilda's Garden. This came about serendipitously after my family moved into one of the old houses by the Covered Bridge. In the kitchen cupboard, I found a small yellowed three-by-five note card, and on the card were the names Matilda, Calvin, Zaida, and Rhoda. I knew in my bones that was a significant name. According to the 1860 slave schedule, Martin Luka Ruff, who owned, who owned land along the Nicajack Creek, also owned a black female, a black male teenager, and two little girls. Then 10 years later, in the 1870 census, after emancipation, their names emerged, Matilda, Calvin, Zaida, and Rhoda. I wanted to give Matilda and her family recognition, but a sign or plaque didn't seem enough. The Toni Morrison Bench was a perfect solution. A bench is strong, a black steel, a bench is interpretive, a bench is interactive with the living. Friends of the Concord Covered Bridge Historic District are sponsoring the Toni Morrison Bench. Placement ceremony will be Tuesday, June 18th at 10:00 a.m. with Representative Terry Cummings keynote speaker. In conclusion, Matilda, who lived across Concord Road from this very spot, and who represents all of the more than 3,000 formerly enslaved people in Cobb County, I believe she will be there. I think her presence will grace the ceremony.
Lee Miller of District 4. And after Lee is Monica Delancy.
Hello, everyone. My name's Lee. I'm a volunteer with the South Cobb Arts Alliance and a resident of District 4 here in Mableton. Very briefly, I want to tell everybody about a new 5K run-and-walk event that SCA is hosting in Powder Springs. It's called the Art of the Springs 5K, which will be held in Thurmond Springs Park on September 14th. 5K race is also being conducted in conjunction with an art festival, the Art of the Springs Festival. September is a pretty good time off, but we have early registration open right now for the 5K run-and-walk event, and it only lasts through June 16th. And we have introductory pricing available at that time, and it goes up after that. So that's the best price you're going to get is through June 16th if you're interested in doing a 5K. We'd also like to stress that walkers are also welcome. Walkers are just important as people who run, and our watchword on that matter is finishing is winning. If you'd like to register for the 5K, registration is available at raceroster.com. There is a direct link on the SCA Facebook page. We also have a new 5K Facebook page where we're going to be posting announcements regarding the 5K event, because we have quite a bit of posting on the South Cobb Arts Alliance page already. So we did open up a new Facebook page for the race, and we'll be posting fairly often. As an aside, on July 13th, we're going to be opening up Art of the Avenue at the Avenue West Cobb. It's a jury art show. This will be the third year we've been at the Avenue West Cobb with the event, and SCA has been operating continuously for 52 years, and people who've been following us a long time say it's the best event we've had, and we've had pretty good luck with it. Thank you for your attention tonight. That concludes my comments, and we hope we'll see you at the event.
Monica Delancy, District 2. And after Monica is Denny Wilson, and that will be the last card.
Yes, good evening. Monica Delancy, District 2. And again, congratulations on your, on the first year anniversary birthday for Mableton. I would like to read about the business licenses for multifamily property, beginning with 2024 business license renewal season. Cobb County requires multifamily rental dwellings of four or more units to be inspected for code compliance in order to preserve property values, promote community safety and well-being, and encourage investment and upkeep and maintenance. Cobb County has 13 specified, I'm sorry, 32 specified multifamily apartment communities, as well, there are a high number of investment companies like Invitation Homes that own a number of property in Mableton. Okay? I would like to know, has the City of Mableton officially accepted the Cobb County code that requires these properties to be inspected? In addition, what would be your process? And will you have a, a department that focuses on making sure these investment companies are not false advertising their properties? Will you consult with a resident association? The importance of that is that a number of times, these property owners come in and they flip them and sell them within two years. But the people that reside on the property have been there for more than five, six, seven years. So it needs to be a respect level to consult with the residents and not leave the residents out of the process at all. A number of times, there's been saying that they don't want no more apartments built. Well, what's happening is, I can understand that because once those apartments age out and they shiny, newness go away, property owners do not focus on the upkeep. All they focus on, how can they get the next best money so they can share with the other investors? So you do have a number of properties in the South Cobb area, specifically Mableton community, that are over 30 years old, and they're charging market rate rent, but yet refusing to upkeep the property. And when you have someone like a person to go and, and could tell them about the property, the regional manager says, we're going to terminate your lease, or we're not going to renew your lease. So that intimidates other residents from complaining. And what does that do to our families? What does it do to our children? This summer, they were hoping to have a pool. They've been without a pool for five years, and every year, they say, we're going to get up and going. Every year, we're going to get up and going. And then, oh, well, maybe next year. But yet, they're still charging market rate rent. So I say to you, Mableton, City Council, this should not be Mableton. You should not allow for these property owners to come in and wreak havoc on these residents, on our families. That's not the best that Cobb, Mableton could do. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Delancy.
Denny Wilson, she's the last card.
Good evening. Denny Wilson, District 2. Congratulations, you guys, on a job well done. As I said earlier, when I spoke to the mayor, you're surrounded by a group of smart, talented people. Use the knowledge. But I want to speak to something that was said earlier, a Mableton city that's tailored to our unique needs. It can't be tailored to our unique needs with all of these townhomes going up. I mean, businesses come to communities based on rooftops. I retired from economic development, state of Georgia, so I know what community, what businesses look for when they move into a community. And true, they look for rooftops, but it's not apartments and it's not townhomes. It's single-family, multifamily homes. That's what they look for because a townhome, so they say, it only takes one to belly up, and there goes the community. And I've been told that there are townhomes that were recently built in the city of Mableton. These investors have bought them, and they're already renting them out. So what is that going to, and I'm not saying renters are bad. Don't, don't get me wrong, so don't anybody jump up and jump on me, because that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that we are in a unique place. I mean, we can set the tone for what Cobb County can and will become. We sit at the corner of the county. We have easy access to I-2285, 7585. We got Six Flags Over Georgia, we got this beautiful epicenter here, we got the most beautiful view of the Atlanta skyline over on the old Magnolia Crossing complex. I mean, we're a diamond in the rough, and people use that term, but they actually really don't know what it means. It means that you guys have been delivered a gift that you can develop, and you can mold, and you can make it your own. But you cannot do that if you continue to let town- But you cannot do that if you continue to let townhomes be built on every corner. I mean, just drive around and look for yourselves if you think I'm lying. Everywhere from, from I-20 all the way up to Barret Parkway, there is nothing but townhomes. But if I go down Barret Parkway up to West Cobb, East Cobb, all I see is single-family homes. So why do we have to settle for less and accept all of these townhomes in a community as beautiful as ours that you guys can build out? Because again, East and West Cobb don't like to hear it, but it is the truth. South Cobb built East and West Cobb. Without South Cobb, there would never have been an East and West Cobb. So we can set the tone for what Cobb County will and can become. And as you guys govern over your communities, please remember that, because what's going on now cannot be our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I've got to tell you all, I live in the best city in the state, that's number five.
Councilman Ferguson, keep your money in your pocket.
I'll pay you later, Jeff.
That concludes all our public comments, but I do want to make note, I skipped over appointments. We do not have any appointments today, but as we walked in today, I think every member of the council has one of these certifications. This is a certification from University of Georgia and the Carl Vinson Institute of Government to certify that myself and each one of our council members and I want to say every member of the staff took part and attended and completed a six-hour planning and zoning workshop last week. Unbeknownst to the typo that may be on here.
Come on, UGA.
I'm not going there. There is, there is a typo. It does say May 23rd, 2023. But the significance of this is, is important. It was, again, myself, the entire council, I think all of the staff, and members, prospective members, prospective future appointees to the Planning Commission, all attended. I know a few of you are in the audience this evening. And it was a six-hour, day-long event that we held down at the GMA office in downtown Atlanta, where we had a customized planning and zoning workshop that was held that they, that they specifically curtailed to the city of Mableton, to our needs. So I want to thank all of you who attended, both staff, council, and especially, hopefully, our future Planning Commission members for taking the time to go to the workshop. Again, very important that talks about taking over planning and zoning is the necessary step that we had to make. I'm proud that we've now another threshold that we've crossed on our journey to take over planning and zoning the city. So we will do what many residents want us to do, which is effectively plan for the future, for the bright future that the city will have. So thank you and congratulations, everyone, for receiving this certificate. Thank you. Let's move on to the consent agenda, which is item nine. The consent agenda has had one item, which is regular meeting minutes for May 22nd. And I would like to entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
I second.
Thank you. All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, that has passed. We move to item 10, which is unfinished business. The first item, which is 10A, is consideration approval of RFQ 24-02, which is the professional planning firm to conduct services for the city of Mableton's Comprehensive Plan 2045. This has been in discussion for quite some time before it was brought to the council. It was brought to the council in May, actually, it's been twice before, and it's been deferred. There's been an awful lot of discussion about this and a lot of opportunity going from the six members or the six companies that had initially responded to our RFP back on March 1st, and then through a successive process of narrowing that down to the six respondents, down to three, and then to a special selection panel that was led by our city manager to move this down to one. At this point in time, I would like to turn over to our city manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and council. The panel, again, with vigorous conversation, two assessments, one extra to have a deeper dive and talk and get to see these firms beyond what they look like on paper, to talk with them directly, to have questions from three staff and from three council members. Good discussion, very challenging questions, and at the end of the day, my, my charge was obviously not to bring my personal opinion in it or any individual's personal opinion or their individual rating, but was to bring back the results of all six members of that panel. After, again, the one-hour interview and also the 20-minute previous presentation and question-and-answer session, the panel was recommending the Grice Consulting Company for the Comprehensive Plan Services for the city of Mableton 2045.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. At this point in time, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the RFQ 2402, to be able to move forward with the Comprehensive Plan.
I knew that we approved the approval of RFQ 2420 for the professional planning firm Grice to conduct services for the city of Mableton Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you. So moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving RFQ 24-02, professional planning firm, which is listed as Grice, for the city of Mableton Comprehensive Plan 2045, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay.
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 Let the record state, I believe, that's a 4-3 vote to the affirmative. Thank you. If that is approved, we will move forward. Mableton 2045 is off and running. Our Comprehensive Plan will move forward with an effective date of...
Mayor, I hate to ask the council to reconsider, but for clarification, is this approval to, because my understanding is that this is approval to bring back the contract and to further negotiate with this firm?
That is correct, ma'am. That is, this is a selection process.
Okay. Because I know that there was concern just about being able to move expeditiously as anticipated, but...
I mean, my, my expectation is they will move exceedingly fast, being the fact that they presented this on March 1st. So, you know, we're going to expect tonight for the selection and then by, I mean, city manager didn't say it specifically, but my expectation is by our next meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. We can have a contract by that date.
Exactly. So this is, this is for clarity, for selection.
Okay. Yeah, and that is the motion that you approved, so that's consistent with my understanding as well. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You're welcome. All right, so let's move forward to item 11, which is new business. Item 11A is the ordinance updating Chapter 7, which is our hotel motel excise tax. As many of you are aware, in Cobb County, the hotel motel excise is 2%. Once we became a city instead of our own ordinance, by law, we could only charge a 5% excise tax. To move that to 8%, we were required to have a bill at the General Assembly to move, to get the extra 3% to take it back to 8. As I mentioned in the last meeting, I think that was one, one of our legislative priorities. That bill was introduced into the House, was approved by the House and the Senate, signed off by Governor Kemp, and per process, now that we have had a resolution, we've now taken, had a bill created at the General Assembly, that bill is now passed and been signed off by the governor, that we can now move this increase for excise tax back to our body to have an ordinance. And again, as an ordinance is just a first read, and again, for everyone, just for clarity's sake, this is not net new in the sense that we are raising the taxes above what they were before we came to a city, which was the 8%. So, Madam Attorney, is anything you have to add to this?
No, Mayor. I believe you covered all parameters.
Counsel, any discussion? All right, hearing no discussion, this will serve as the first read. It's expected that we'll bring this back at our next meeting for the second read to be able to move forward with the, approving the excise tax. Item 11B is consideration approval for the mayor to negotiate and execute financial services contracts. This is something that is the first time coming, I think, directly to the panel, directly to the council, but I know it's something that our city manager has been in discussion with as we, we have a current spending plan, we're looking at moving forward with building out apartments. So the floor is yours, City Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. This is in, aligned with the council's commitment to financial excellence and transparency. We, as we come to the end of our spending plan, we have taken upon ourselves a lot of work, contracts, employees, leases, and we are in a position where we have to make produced financial statements. We're getting ready to onboard an accounting software, and then from my experience, when you make transitions from a simple system of keeping up with revenues, expenses, and you go to a more complex system that's going to look at valuation of things, simple as sick leave actually has to be evaluated on your, on your financial statements and how much you kept for paid time off. So it gets a little bit more complicated into keeping up with our revenues, expenses. And so to make that transition and to support and congratulate, actually, Mr. Frank Malazi, who's done a great job of getting us to where we are, getting us ready for FY25, which is going to feed our formerly adopted budget in 2026. Getting us ready for that, I felt necessary to bring on subject matter experts, help to help Mr. Malazi look at our financial system, make recommendations, start, start some internal controls, help us make the transition from bookkeeping setup system now and to our accounting platform of BSA, and also to produce an end-of-year report, projected budget. And so this is what these subject matter experts who have a lot of experience in local government and gasping, they're coming to help us with. And so with that said, I'll be asking at the next meeting also, once I talk with the financial consultant, that we do ask to extend the current spending plan for up to 60 days until we can get these official documents ready to give a report, probably before the council to allow them to ask questions about our financial status, kind of lining us up, teeing us up for FY25, which will feed FY26. And I do have two representatives here from the firm, if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And to that penultimate point, I want to, we will have discussions about the spending plan and what we decide to do. As our discussion before about potentially extending that or reauthorizing, well, there's going to be options, right? I think that we can have that everybody comfortable with, but I want to make sure that the council, that what we're going to do, it's not directly connected with this, but I know with our, with the June 30th date coming up, we want to have a plan in place going forward.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's a fact. I've spoken with our financial consultant. He believes that what we're going to do is appropriate, and even though we're not required during transition, we want to start practicing as if we are in official requirements because you don't want to wait till we get there to do it. So yes, sir, we'll have an answer before June 30th on what we could spend past June 30th.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to entertain a motion to consider approval for the mayor to negotiate and execute financial services contract.
Make a motion for the mayor...
I'm sorry, this is a, this is not a first-read, second-read sort of situation?
No, it is not.
And so can we talk just a little bit further?
So... We will once we get a second. We'll go into discussion.
Okay.
This is, this is a resolution.
It's not an ordinance, doesn't require a first read.
Yes. Counselwoman Ladapo, if you were making a motion?
Sure. Make a motion for the mayor to negotiate and execute financial services contracts.
I second.
Thank you. Being so moved and have a seconded, I now open the floor for discussion. Councilman Ferguson.
So my question goes to the actual recommendation that I see and how it talks about end of year and what we've done, and then a proposed spending plan versus a proposed budget.
That's correct.
Words matter, so I just want to make sure that...
Yes, sir.
We're working towards the same thing.
Yep. And I said, I actually probably said projected, but you're right, when you start using a verbal term of adopted budget, that triggers certain requirements.
Correct.
So I can say proposed or projected, but I would not recommend we adopt a budget in transition. We would call it a spending plan, just to make sure that we don't trigger any requirements from DCA while we're in transition, or the University of Georgia.
Yeah, and I don't think this, this is very similar to what we did last year, when we had a formerly adopted spending plan that we went through several iterations. We had a public hearing, and ultimately, we approved it. No, we approved the spending plan, I think we also made this resolution that we held ourselves to over the past year.
Correct.
I don't think this is any different. We do have the ability to have a formalized budget. I don't even know that we would submit that the DCA, the DCA requirements is that coming out of our transition period that we do, but that would be next year, not this year.
And I guess I'm harping on this because as I read through the, again, words matter. As we read through the agenda item memorandum, it talks about an FY25 budget in the background and summary and that sort of thing, and then, once we get over to the actual recommendation, it then calls it a spending plan, which is a different word. So I just want to be careful that we're using the proper terms and we're consistent across the board.
You're, you're, no, you're, he's absolutely correct. And I think we had said that we will call it a spending plan. And so you'll also notice, though, where it says FY25 budget, that is in lowercase.
Agreed.
So being that it's lowercase is not the proper form. When the proper form was used, the capital letters were used for proposed spending.
So 26 is lowercase, too.
Again, that's the same, but in the informal sense, not the formal sense of what would be submitted.
Okay. And I just want to make sure that we're putting the proper thought process forward to the citizens who were expecting one thing and were kind of deviating from that at this point. Sort of, from wording.
Well, from, from a...
From a wording perspective.
Yes, from a wording perspective, correct. And I, I don't necessarily want to get into that right now around the specifics of it. We know that when we produce a budget, which is our city manager talking about, the 26 will be different.
Right.
But I don't think this is any different. I mean, using the term spending plan or budget while we're in the transition phase is, is a choice of ours.
Yeah, the key word is adopted. Yeah, what you have here is you can call propose, draft, you can call all kinds of things, but once it's adopted and voted on, that it was adopted, it can be formal. But there's a point of order from our master-at-home city attorney.
Yes, Mayor. So Susan does not believe that the name of the companies was articulated within the motion, so just out of caution, if you could just clarify the name of the companies, just in case it was not within the, the motion that was made.
And it may be written in two different motions.
It's on page 21, too.
Two different motions.
I'm following. Want to go back to the motion?
Yeah, for sure.
Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I make a motion for the mayor to negotiate and execute financial services contracts with Sumter Local Government Services and Roche Advisory Services.
Thank you for that clarification. I'll entertain, I'll, do we have a second for that?
I second.
Thank you. So properly moved and seconded, I'd now like to call for a vote. All those in favor...
I actually, I had a...
Oh, we have a moment of discussion.
We were still in discussion, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so I actually have a question.
Okay, please, sorry.
For our city manager, can you just kind of state and explain exactly what the scope will be for these two professional services companies, and exactly about the timeframe? And in addition to that, include why we are, as a city, are choosing... And, and in addition to that, include why we are, as a city, are choosing to use consultants for this stage of the game rather than maybe hiring someone, you know, from finance, you know, as an employee? So, can you, can you speak to that?
Yes, ma'am. When you hire employees and local government, God forbid, if one ever decides to charge one of us with a discrimination suit or working out of order, we better have a properly defined job description, pay chart, org chart, personnel file. And in our transition period, y'all have done a great job of getting that started, but we're not there yet to have it really scripted and ready to go in case, God forbid, you start getting five or six employees, things happen, people do stuff, so we want to have your HR system defensible. And not saying ours isn't, but as we grow and we start having people in positions of supervision, people may not show up to work, you better be ready. And so, before you start hiring that high talent, or a finance director, councilman, or HR director, you want that system set up. It would take at least two or three weeks to get correct talent in here. It is June 4th, June 30th is 26 days, it's June 5th, I'm sorry, what is today, June 5th? It is June 5th. June 30th is 25 days away. I could play with the numbers and try to hire somebody and then bring them on board and get it, that's not realistic. It would be in July before we have staff onboard ready, have the BSA software, which I think they're talking 36 days to bring the software onboard, so we're not going to hit the June 30th deadline if we decide to go hire. So, my, just in my experience, as the mayor has mentioned, to make sure we remain transparent with the public and have some documents, I got to bring in subject matter experts right now. I wouldn't bring in consultants if we have full staff, we got five staff, as you know that, I don't have to table the five staff, but to the other part, our needs will increase, I actually thought, anticipated this question, I got it written down, our needs will increase from bookkeeping and accounting and finance internal controls with multiple contracts, leases, employees that need to scale up for the macro transition as for comm, community development, code enforcement, planning zone, if we start getting in the area of those three services, you got to have, and the margin of error will increase verbally, because now you're dealing with so many transactions, payroll, hiring, medical. We need to be prepared to create a capital improvement plan and capital replacement plan. It's a little bit complex, and I don't want to get too much into it, I do have guys here that have experience, like speaker, but also it's require assets, they have to be properly depreciated, utilize mechanisms available from local governments to set up audited financial statements. We may be required by some folks as we start doing things, but we want to see some audited financial statements. As we onboard BSA and reduce the, the accounting areas or anticipation of our first adopted budget, you don't want to, I know from experience, a very well-respected organization had a change in accounting system and it couldn't account for $800,000, it wasn't anything that had gone wrong, it was just a transition accounting system, but because they did it incorrectly, they had to write off $800,000 as an accounting error, and that affected their audit. My goal for us as a city to have that first audit, to be well-respected. So, I'm setting this up for success in FY26. So, that's the reason why, and that's why we're not going with staff. I hope that answers your questions.
Yeah, no, it did. I just wanted, you know, for the public to know
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Why we're making decision to hire consultants.
Oh, yes, ma'am, oh, okay.
And then, the second part of my question, in terms of the scope, is what is the, you know, the timeline from the time that they, when they will either transition out and as a city we take over?
Very good, yes, ma'am, very good question. I'm looking for an end of year financial report, a projected spending plan, and an assessment of our internal controls. And then, onboarding our current system that Frank is running and to the BSA software, that's a lot of moving parts. That's what these two, and they've already talked with Frank and our Roush and Sumter, I believe is still here, we have experienced city managers, finance directors, these guys have done it for multiple cities, and so, their scope is to be able to get us in a place where we'll have a good foundation moving forward. And Frank will be the leader, obviously I have oversight, but again, end of year financial report, financial statement showing the end of year financial report, projected spending plan based on how many employees you think we had, code enforcement, so forth and so on, so that's what they will be tasked with to do.
So, basically, from the time they're hired, at least to the end of?
Yeah, I don't expect, it's hard, we're going to talk about, I wouldn't expect working with Sumter, I don't see that being more than a two-month at most, but I am good to your point. I would like to make sure we're good, but at the simultaneously while we have an HR firm, we're going to be recruiting and hiring finance staff. It would be nice to bring them along while, before this is wrapped up. I don't see this as being a lot, this is not a six month engagement, no, ma'am.
Thank you.
Now, for internal controls, for audit, they come back occasionally checked, just to do spot checks. He's also IT auditor that we look at, it's a way they can set up systems that can check if you pay something twice out of mistake, a double payment, or we have some erroneous employee, it'll catch it.
Mr. Manager, I, I'll, go ahead.
I was going to ask, so is this price for six months of service?
We have a max for both at $120,000. That is not necessarily what we'll spend, but I cannot exceed that if the council votes that. I don't plan to use all of that budget, it is in the spending plan. I think I laid it out, I don't know if you have it, but it is in the spending plan, some contract, so it's financial services, it's about $200,000, I believe.
And do we need to include the upper bound in the motion?
I'm sorry?
Do we need to include the upper bound of $120,000?
You can't say not to exceed $120,000 for both, that's up to y'all.
Susan?
So, the memorandum is, is not to exceed $120,000 between both of the firms, and the funding options are listed there that comes directly from the spending plan, so it's not in excess of that? The, the, Counselwoman, I want to make sure your question was addressed.
Yes, I was asking if we need to make the motion again to include the upper bound of $120,000, not to exceed that.
Well, the boundaries are set by the spending plan. We're not asked for anything in excess of the spending plan, so the boundaries are already set.
Okay.
On this item. And I do want to be clear about, this is not, I think city manager included this, it is not in lieu of us getting a CFO or a financial manager going away from that direction, it is, is some initial work of bringing in some expertise, and in the memorandum, it does list out the financial services, specifically what those are going to be in telling, specifically saying review and presentation of financial data related to expenditures in year one of cityhood amongst other items. And, and Mr. Manager, I know you mentioned that both of the companies have representation that are here, I would actually like to open the floor if either of them would like to take the, address the podium to take a minute to address the council about their company and their services.
Yes, sir, then we can start with Mike Liszynby, actually a major resident.
Can you ask me a question? Oh, yes, one more, I'm sorry, we have one more question from the council.
Yeah, just a quick question, I see the proposed services in the, the back portion, Sumter's, task number four speaks to additional consulting services and executive search services?
Yes, sir.
So, are we expecting Sumter to?
I can tell you I'm not going to use them for that.
Okay, thank you.
That's what we got that HR firm for.
Thank you.
Now, they could advise, but we hired an HR firm last year that's going to handle most of our recruiting, interviewing, we'll talk, that was offered in case we needed to do that, but I'm not, I don't plan to go that route.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sir.
So, I'm, I'm Michael Liszynby, I am the president and CEO of Roush Advisory Services. We are a national firm, we do have offices, our headquarters is in Marietta, so we're Cobb County headquarters, we also have offices in San Francisco, LA, we do work extensively with governments and private industry. I'm also a resident of District Four, so I am local, I'm very happy to be helping out the city. Wanted to address one thing you just said, Mr. Ferguson, from a, an HR perspective, as you're going forward, with our contract at Roush, we do allow the city at any point in time after they've worked with us for four months, if there's a professional that works out and they want to transition them, there's no additional cost. So, we do, we do not preclude you from hiring our individuals, and we do not charge you a fee after the fact. So, just wanted to share that with you. We, we are, we were asked to participate in this by Bill, to assist mostly with internal controls. So, you know, again, when you're setting up a city and you're setting up the financials, transparency is everything, and I think the citizens want transparency, and, you know, Mr. Tanks did mention that we can help to set up IT controls that will identify potential errors and omissions and mistakes within the, within the new financial system, and alert the council if they're in the event there is a potential mistake or duplicate payment, or, you know, issue that's ongoing. So, again, our, our role is to help to add transparency and add financial controls, but happy to answer any questions from the council.
If there's any, thank you, thank you for your time.
All right, we have Mr. Warren Hutmacher come up from Sumter Consulting.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Warren Hutmacher, and I'm the founder and president of Sumter Local Government Consulting. We were formed in November of 2021, my background is 25 years in local government, 20 years as a city manager of Avondale Estates, Norcross, Dunwoody, John's Creek, and Hedo, Texas, before I started the firm, and specifically Dunwoody was a brand new city when I started, so I started prior to incorporation, and then walked through the entire process, so everything that you're going through now, we've done before. Also, on our team is Chris Pike, CPA, has worked in local government also for about 20 years, and was the initial finance director in Dunwoody, so all the issues that you have with startups, to be putting in chart of accounts, internal controls, initial spending plans and projections, understanding all of the different revenue sources and how we account for that on a going forward basis, and all the issues with contract services, you know, we have specific expertise in that, so we look forward to being able to help you on this short-term project, until you've got your, you know, full-time staff to be able to handle this, and really set, I think as Bill said perfectly, set a adequate foundation for success in the future, so that when your staff gets here, they're, they're off and running, they don't have to set these things up that otherwise, you know, would be a learning curve for them, where it wouldn't be for us. Be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
All right. Thank you, Warren.
Thank you. One, one last one for city manager.
Yes, sir.
So, this becomes an army behind Mr. Malazi
Yes, sir.
To do the things he has to do. Is this move take anything off of the mayor, the manager, in the day to day? And we're laughing, but I'm
No, seriously, yes, sir, it does.
Yes.
It does. It, it positions us to get in full city mode. You all have been in transitional mode in, since you asked that question publicly, I would love you all just to vote, shake hands, kiss babies. That's all that's left in the city. So, yes, sir, this is that transition as we bring in staff to take some of the pressure off of hard work all of y'all have been doing. I know y'all still going to work hard, but we're going to make it a little easier for you.
All right, thank you for that. So, this now takes us to 11C, which is consideration approval of the city manager to purchase furniture in accordance to the spending plan. Again, key word here is in accordance to the
They didn't vote.
Oh, we didn't vote on it.
You didn't vote?
Boy, you said move on, I was moving on.
Oh. I can't hear, I'm sorry.
All right. So, all right, so with that being said, my apologies, we're still on 11B, so entertain a motion for consideration approval for the mayor to negotiate, execute financial services contract. Now, this motion was made, it was asked, listed two companies, which was done by Counselwoman Ladapo, it was seconded by, who was it seconded by? Counselman Davis, you have that?
I got that.
All right, all those in favor of allowing the mayor to negotiate and execute financial services contract with Roush and Sumter Consulting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, thank you, I appreciate that, and apologies for my oversight. Now, let's move on to item 11C, which is the approval of the city manager to purchase furniture in accordance with the spending plan. In our current spending plan, we had allotted funds for furniture, and I do believe this falls within, completely within the lines of furniture that was outlined, as well as the identified vendor for that, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir, as I mentioned earlier, we're fortunate now to be, have entered into leases for employees, I have a dedicated workspace, we actually met today with our business license clerk, Ms. Nari, and we're getting ready to let you all know, probably in the next month, we're going to establish Mabelton Official Open Hour, so people can walk in and actually see a city employee and handle their issues. Yes, sir, we have made that threshold, so with that said, they need furniture. They, and so, with the two spaces we have leased here, I, we have in the spending plan, it was $25,000 under funding item, $2,300, of course, $1,300, that 5,4,2200 furniture and fixtures are $25,000, of course, I do not plan to exceed that amount, and so, I am recommending approval of the furniture and fixtures for a lease office space at the epicenter through contract, Business Interiors, a minority provider, 20 years here in Cobb County, of furnitures and fixtures.
And for clarity, that is furniture and fixtures, okay, for the lease space, I see that, okay, not to exceed $25,000, it's related to this six-month lease. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to allow the city manager to purchase the furniture in accordance with the spending plan.
I'll make a motion to allow the city manager to purchase furniture in accordance with the spending plan, not to exceed $25,000.
Aye, second.
All those in favor of allowing the city manager to purchase furniture in accordance with the spending plan, not to exceed $25,000, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing all the voices, the ayes have it, thank you. Item 12, which is other visits discussion, I don't think we have any there. Item 13, city manager, you have any announcements or comments, sir?
Yes, sir, I do want to welcome onboard, as you already have recognized, I believe she's still back there, Ms. Allison Benson, our employee number five. We were actually taking seniority today, we counted Lily as the most senior employee, so she gets to ask for time off, Susan, second, now, we were third, I'm the fourth senior employee, so I have to wait my turn to pick time off, but I'm now senior to somebody, Ms. Allison Benson, so I want to welcome aboard, and then also, Mayor, I want to thank everyone that helped, Cassandra, Jeff, Mick, Lions Club, Lauren Andrews, Natalia, every, I mean, council members, everyone that helped pull off the Mabelton one-year anniversary. I'll admit, I've been involved with events now for over seven years, I've seen some award-winning, I've been involved with award-winning events, I have trophies to show it, in two cities, one city and one county, so I know what it takes to get stuff done, but kudos off to everyone that helped, you know who you are, I'll say Cassandra's name twice, she and Jeff, of course, our staff, and then what the council members done, everything y'all did, great job, very impressed for what we did this past weekend. I was tired, but I was, I had fun.
Thank you for that, sir. City clerk?
No comments.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. Counselman Jeff, I'm sorry, Counselman Davis.
Yes, I want to say again, happy birthday to the city of Mabelton, my apologies for not being a part of the festivities, I was in Texas, where there were a bunch of storms and flash flooding, and it made me say, there's no place like home. But again, just want to say thanks to each and every one, I want to always try to recognize, well, all of you, but I see people from the O.C.A. Community Task Force, from Mick, from Keep Car Beautiful, the Pageant, I mean, Lions Club, I mean, I'm always saying this, and I'll keep saying it, it's always great to see it. It's always great to see so many citizens involved in what's going on with this city. And you're concerned, we may not always agree. The fact that you're here says so much, and it moves my heart that I see this almost every time we meet. So, I want to thank each and every one of you for your dedication to making this city the best it can be because it's going to take not only us, but it's going to take you. And with that, I will say thanks again.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Donnell.
Yes, a huge congratulations to the city of Mabelton for our first anniversary, and a huge thank you to everyone who made this past weekend a success. I attended the event, and you can tell that a lot of thought and effort went into it. So, thank you to the mayor, the council, the city staff, volunteers, vendors, and all the attendees for all of your involvement and dedication into making the event a success. I also want to flag two exciting events coming up in District Two. One of them is that we're having our first-ever District Two annual yard sale on the 20th of July. And the purpose of that event is to build community, meet and connect with your neighbors, and just foster a strong sense of community, and of course, affordable shopping, coming out to support local vendors. And proceeds from the yard sale will just go back to our community to support youth programs up until the end of this year. So, I highly encourage you all to participate. If you have any questions about it, please do let me know. It's on the 20th of July from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at Pure Hope Church on Mabelton Parkway. We'll be camping out there in their parking lot and having the best time. So, I hope I see all of you there. And another event that I want to talk about is in preparation for the back-to-school in August. On the 28th of July, a Sunday, I am partnering with Pure Hope Church and Representative Cummings to host a very nice cookout with burgers, hot dogs, water slide, you name it, right there in the parking lot for our kids. And we'll be distributing backpacks with school supplies as well that evening. So, that's happening on the 28th of July from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and we are taking donations for backpacks, for school supplies, and also donation in cash, if you will. So, please email, contact the team at Pure Hope Church to make these donations. We just want to make sure we send off our kids back to school in the best shape so they can get the great education that they deserve. Thank you all for coming tonight. It's wonderful to see you, and I hope you have safe travels back home. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for taking the opportunity to come out today. It's great to see everyone. And I also want to extend a warm welcome to our newest team member, Allison. I'm glad you onboard and glad to have you. I would also like to take the opportunity to extend my heartfelt thanks to all the residents who attended our Argyle Town Hall meeting last week for Districts Three and District Five. I want to thank Impact Worship Center, Bishop and Lady Jones for hosting the event. It's important for us to have the engagement and to hear from our community and to have that dialogue. So, we were able to get some insight and feedbacks on your thoughts as we worked together to address the needs and concerns of our community. And we'll have a lot more. I'm hoping that, you know, we'll have an increase in participation, but I'm glad for those that were able to come out. And then I also want to wish Mabelton a happy birthday, our first anniversary. The festivities kicked off on Thursday with a golfing tournament, which I personally enjoyed riding around on the golf cart. I had a fantastic time. It was a beautiful day out there on the green. And then Friday's Living Legends brunch was a heartfelt event. I enjoyed that. And then it culminated with the celebration that we had on Saturday with Mabelton Day. I do want to congratulate Frank and Patty for their impressive performance on the fun run. I didn't miss that. I heard you embodied the spirit of that event, so I'm glad that you came out. Next year, I'm gonna beat you, Patty.
Yeah, she won.
Oh, yes. Yes. That's awesome.
Frank, in the second.
And I do want to thank the mayor. He put a lot of time and effort and energy into making sure that we had four successful events. I want to thank the steering committee, our dedicated event planners, Lauren and Latoya, community partners. I want to thank Cassandra, everyone, the fantastic food trucks, and all the stakeholders who played a crucial role in making the celebration a success. And I'm looking forward if this was the precedence. I'm looking forward to what we're gonna do next year because it's gonna be great. Thanks, Mom, also. And then I also, I missed a part of the performance. A lot of the celebratory events on Saturday, I was honored to share that I received an award from the Atlanta Neighborhood Development Program Communities Leadership Institute. ANDP is a nonprofit organization dedicated to developing financing and advocating for affordable housing on a large scale. I, along with four other distinguished recipients, was selected to represent our respective areas, and I was privileged to represent South Cobb. And we had an opportunity to travel to San Francisco, and there we engaged with local leaders there to discuss best practices and explore new opportunities. And so, I just want to thank Atlanta Neighborhood Development Program and the community leadership and neighbor works for the incredible honor and for recognizing us. And then lastly, I do want to take a moment to recognize that June is Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month. Yesterday was my grandfather's birthday, Willie Clay Jeffcoat, and he succumbed to Alzheimer's. But Alzheimer's is really important to me. I want to increase public awareness and understanding of Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia, which affect millions of families across our nation. My grandfather was a farmer, an alchemist, a storyteller, and he was a great man. And so, I just want to take this moment to recognize him and the loved ones and caregivers that have to care for those that have Alzheimer's. And, you know, if you have an opportunity, please participate in any events that may be going on to raise awareness and funds and research for Alzheimer's. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman O'Donnell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just gonna take a few minutes just to announce some other upcoming volunteer opportunities and events that weren't mentioned at the beginning of our meeting in public comments. The first is this Saturday, June 8th, at 10:00 a.m. the Georgia Native Plant Society will be having a workday at Heritage Park to clean up around the park and to remove non-invasive plant species from the native habitat restoration areas within the park. Be sure to bring some gardening gloves. And then on June 29th, at 11:00 a.m. at the South Cobb Regional Library, you are invited to join me to learn about backyard chicken keeping. The library has allowed me permission to bring a couple hens as well. So, it's gonna be a fun and educational event, and I hope to see you there. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilman Ferguson.
I saw next door that there was a loose rooster.
Does not.
Of course. Happy birthday to this great city of Mabelton. Thank you for all of the events this weekend. Unfortunately, what you see in front of you are a bunch of full-time workers, so I was unable to attend any event because my full-time job would not let me be great. But I was definitely, my heart was here, although my body was not. Also, thank you again to Impact Worship Center. They have an amazing facility over there. And I bring them up because not only do they have an amazing facility, and Bishop and Lady Jones are doing an amazing thing with the building. They have a heart for the city of Mabelton. I spoke with Bishop Jones afterwards, and we're gonna get together and start coordinating on how we can come together and work on the things that he's trying to accomplish, whether it be from working with our youth, working with the homeless, working with just the citizens of Mabelton. They have a heart for the city. So, stay tuned for that. We, as a council, are going to continue to say, I'm, as a city councilman, I'm going to continue to say that we have to do a better job of making sure that we're communicating with the citizens. There's a lot of things that we're trying to accomplish in this. There's a lot of different moving parts, and we want you to be involved in those different moving parts. I will also say that just because you signed up for a cab and have not gotten a phone call or have not gotten appointed to something does not mean that you're lost. We're working towards that, and we're, everything that we do every time we come to meet is working towards where we want to go and the vision for us being a city. We can't do planning unless we have, you know, some other things put in place. So, we've got to continue to move forward and continue to make sure that we're doing these times. And we, but I do want you to continue to, I do want to continue to be accountable to you. So, if you have something that you have as a question, reach out. A number of you have, a number of you do. So, continue to reach out and continue to voice your opinion. Continue to let us know about the things that you'd like to see in the city of Mabelton. This city is not going to be built by the seven of us. It's going to be built by the 79,000 of us. So, every last one of the citizens of Mabelton needs to continue to speak their voice. And last, I'm selfishly gonna say, this month is Father's Day month. So, men, happy Father's Day to those dads. Men, go get doctor's appointments. Go get checked out. We cannot continue to lose our men as too early. We cannot. So, continue to, I hate going to the doctor, but I did it. And I'm imploring all of you to go make your doctor's appointments. Men are sitting here today because they went to the doctor, and early detection helps. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hernan.
Good evening, everyone. The good thing about being last is usually everyone has said everything I want to say. So, I'm always very short, but I do want to thank all of you who showed up. Happy anniversary to the city of Mabelton, and it was really a great event. And I also want to thank, because I see some of you here in the audience, those of you who came to our Planning and Zoning 101 Workshop. And I'm excited about what Mabelton has in store, and we have some amazing people who have volunteered to work on this particular board, and I'm so grateful for you all. And I just want to encourage you, as TJ has already said, for those of you who want to be involved in the city of Mabelton, please go on to mabelton.gov where you'll see a list of the cabs that are available. Reach out to your council member if you're interested because Mabelton definitely needs you. And we thank those of you who have already sacrificed your time and have signed up for one of those cabs. And that's it for me. You guys have a good evening and safe travels back home.
Thank you, Councilwoman. One note, there was one public comment card that did not get called, and that is Ms. Jo from the South Cobb Regional Library. Would you like to come up, ma'am, and get your requisite two minutes? Apologize for the oversight.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jo Lehman, District One. I asked the city clerk for four minutes, so I thought she banned me because I asked one more time. But anyway, congratulations and happy birthday, Mabelton. A couple of months ago, I think I talked about Vision to Learn. So, Vision to Learn started at the South Cobb Library this week on Monday. Monday, they did 13 exams. Five children got glasses. Well, we'll get glasses. Yesterday, so yesterday, two vans came. They did 33 exams. 20 children need glasses. So, this is going on at six libraries. So, that was just at South Cobb. And there are four more days that they will come. So, just think about all the children that need glasses and all those that will not be able to because all the slots are full for the summer. And one other thing, I know we all think we have treasure in our backyard. So, on June 26th, Randy from the South Cobb, from Stone Mountain Treasure Hunters will be at South Cobb, and he's gonna teach you all how to treasure hunt and start treasure hunting clubs in your own neighborhood. So, come join us on June 26th, South Cobb Library, 5:00. So, I'm gonna be quick and stop right there. Thank you.
There's a couple of things that I want to say tonight, starting off with what everyone else has think of said, is to celebrate and commemorate our one-year anniversary. We are all busy with hundreds and thousands of things to do every day and every week. But I sincerely felt that this first-year commemoration was something that we absolutely had to do. It was a way to obviously commemorate the first-year anniversary, but a way to get the publicly actively engaged in celebrating that and coming together and building some unity and getting people together with us outside of, you know, this more formal setting. And at least to say that I believe it was incredibly successful. I know people near and far have, I've heard about it thus far, the golf tournament that we had on Thursday, the senior event that we had on Friday morning, the fun run, and the festival that was on Saturday, and the four, and the four church services that I attended on Sunday. But what I wanted to mention is, is our partners that were, that were part of this with us. And the first one is the Senior Citizens Council of Cobb County. It was a fantastic organization. This, you know, myself and this city, we want to ensure that our seniors are at the table in multitude of different ways. We want to make sure we gave back to them and ensure that our seniors understood that we value them, we value their input, and also want to recognize them as well. So, the Senior Citizens Council of Cobb County was a partner with that. For the fun run on Saturday morning, Inspire E.D.U. is a company ran by a gentleman named Richard Hicks, who is a Mabelton resident. He's a part-time Mabelton resident. He was a graduate of Pebblebrook High School, and he now owns a company that works to close the digital divide. They work with different school systems and different companies or different districts to help train both youth and older people on digital equity and hoping to, and working to close that divide. And most of the time when they're finished, they give laptops away to ensure that they can go out into, people can go home and be able to more adaptively, be able to engage with where we are in a modern society today. On the Sunday, I do want to, I'll mention the churches that took part in this. Now, there was hopefully many other churches. I'm not sure how many churches or places of worship took part in the celebration over the Saturday and Sunday. But I know World of Faith, under the leadership of Bishop Bronner, took part. Faith Christian Church of Mabelton, Dr. Andy Daniel, and the, I think, executive pastor Barry Smith attended. And I think we had several members of council attend that service, as well as our city clerk and our financial consultant. And then to Faith Christian Center up off East West Connector and Pastor Kirk Butler, who gave us a very warm welcome and also bought green cupcakes, which they handed out to everyone after the service. So, I thought that was pretty awesome. So, you know, thank you to not only our sponsors and our vendors, but also to these key partners that also helped this happen. I want to also acknowledge and somewhat of a announcement about one of the partners and beneficiaries of the weekend, which is a new organization that I've created. It's called the Mayor's Educational Impact Fund. And this is a fund that I'd started talking about last year before even got elected, about how we could do something about the schools in this city. Now, as mayor and council and city government, we are not responsible or have oversight of our schools at all. But one thing that's been very apparent to me in living here all these years, and especially now as mayor, is a simple premise, and that is, a city cannot be stronger than its schools. City can be no stronger than its schools. When people are deciding about where to move to, about where to live, about where to relocate, they take a critical look at our schools. And if our schools are not on par with West Cobb or East Cobb, we are going to be limited in that factor as a city and a governing body. So, I've started this nonprofit in efforts to be able to work outside the schools, to offer opportunities for students, to offer exposure, but also to be able to highlight and bring awareness about how we can work between the school system and the nonprofit sector and philanthropies to be able to bolster our students, to be able to bolster our schools. This is not unlike some, what some of the other cities have and areas have. It was mentioned about East Cobb and West Cobb, where there's foundations that exist to ensure that those schools, those students, their teachers, and parents get to what, get to things that they need to have. So, again, more to come as we're building our board... So again, more to come as we're building our board around that and looking forward to having members from the school board, potential members from the city, as well as school administrators join us, join me in this particular effort. The last thing I want to bring up is congratulations on our Mabelton 2045. I am super, super excited about this, right? I am really excited. And I will state for the record, Mr. Tanks, we absolutely do need to get a Mabelton 2045 Steering Committee up and going because I want to make sure that our key members of the city, as well as our business community, is brought to the table in helping us to shape this Mabelton 2045 effort. The last thing I want to announce is that the U.S. Conference of Mayors, which I'm a member of, and Comcast, put out a grant proposal, which was called Closing the Digital Divide and Tomorrow's Future. I almost on a lark applied for this grant. I actually called Sonya Grant, who is the CEO of Cobb Works, and asked her if she would partner with me on this effort, which is a digital initiative to, again, help close the digital divide, make sure that people in Mabelton are being trained for 21st century jobs. So as they're working to stand up Cobb Works, I thought it was a great opportunity to take advantage of a grant that had been presented. So I spoke with Ms. Grant. I worked and got the grant actually submitted, and low and behold, we actually was named one of the 10 finalists in this grant submission from cities from across the country. So I am super excited about that. It is part of our, what we're calling the Mabelton Digital Equity Initiative. And again, the work is that we can work in partnership with Cobb Works and focus on bringing in specific talent to be able to train people in Mabelton, train them in cybersecurity efforts, train them in technology, train them in innovative efforts for jobs for the future, solar, wind, things that we'll be able to retool and train people, both young and old. So hopefully, my fingers are crossed that at this Conference of Mayors this summer, we've already made the final 10, and that Mabelton will be one of the cities chosen. So thank you. That does it for my updates. And for all you that will not be around after our executive session, I want to thank you for coming as usual. Our next meeting will be on June the 26th at 6:30 here in the same place we know right now.
Mr. Mayor, I did want to ask that we go into executive session for the purpose of real estate. Yes, sir. I forgot to ask that question. For real estate litigation and personnel services.
Yes, sir. So with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion to take us into executive session for litigation, real estate, personnel.
Motion to go into executive session for litigation, real estate, personnel.
I second.
Thank you. Motion being made and duly seconded. All those in favor of going to executive session for litigation, real estate, and personnel, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, for coming again. We will be going to executive session. Bring sense, sir. All right. Thank you, everyone, for waiting while we were in executive session. I'd like to entertain a motion to exit executive session.
I'll make a motion to exit executive session.
Second.
Thank you. Motion being made and duly seconded. I'd like to entertain a vote. All those in favor of exiting executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Do we have a?
Yes. I make a motion to authorize the mayor to approve agreements for due diligence services for potential acquisition of land within the city-designated urban redevelopment area within the parameters of the spending plan.
I second.
Motion being made and duly seconded. All those in favor of voting on the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Duly noted, Madam Attorney. We have six yays and one nay, the negative being Councilwoman Ock. Thank you. I don't know that we have any other business or any other motions ahead in front of us. Is that 16A? If I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yep.
All right. So Item 16A is consideration approval of a resolution, a prerequisite resolution declaring the need of a Mabelton urban redevelopment agency establishing an urban redevelopment area and for lawful purposes. All right. Let's move forward with that one. I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of this resolution.
Make a motion for approving the consideration and approval of resolution, a prerequisite resolution declaring the need of a Mabelton urban redevelopment agency establishing an urban redevelopment area and other lawful purposes.
I second.
Thank you. Motion has been made and properly seconded. All those in favor of approving the resolution, a prerequisite resolution for declaring the need of a Mabelton urban redevelopment agency establishing an urban redevelopment area and for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Let the record state that there was six votes in affirmative, one in negative, negative being Councilwoman Ock. Let's take this to Item 16B. 16B is a consideration and approval of a resolution establishing membership and composition of the Mabelton urban redevelopment agency and for other lawful purposes. At this point in time, I would like to entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to consider and approve of resolution establishing membership and composition of the Mabelton urban redevelopment agency and for other lawful purposes.
Thank you, Councilman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion being made and properly seconded. I'd like to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving a resolution establishing a membership and composition of the Mabelton urban redevelopment agency and for other lawful purposes, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hearing no opposition, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Mayor, procedurally, can we make one procedural correction?
Yes, ma'am.
I meant to include the word "any" in the recommendation that I gave for the URA motion, so if the council would be willing to do a motion for reconsideration and then to vote one more time on that item.
And then 16A.
That Councilwoman Oladapo.
Is that 16?
No, that's Oladapo's.
Oh, that's original. Okay. All right, sorry.
So you can say it identical as worded if we do the motion for reconsideration. Now, you don't have to include the word "any," but I meant to include the word "any" in my recommendation, and I did not do that accidentally. So if you'd entertain a motion to reconsider, and then after you would, if the motion for reconsideration passes, if you would give Councilwoman Oladapo the opportunity to say her motion again.
Yeah, at this point in time, I entertain a motion for reconsideration for Councilwoman Oladapo's previous motion.
I second.
Thank you.
Well, I think you asked for a motion, so you would need someone to.
To make the motion.
To make the motion, and then the second.
Okay, you make the motion.
You asked for it.
Can I make a motion to reconsider?
Yes, you can. You voted affirmatively, so you can make the motion.
Okay. Well, I make a motion to reconsider my previous motion.
And then now you can second because we have the motion on the table.
Wait. What?
So they're trying to reconsider.
Did you make the same motion again? It's the exact same?
No, for reconsideration.
Okay.
It's a reconsideration, so she can re, so do the motion over again.
Okay.
So we can reword it.
Yes, so we can reword it.
We don't need to reword it.
Yes, you do not need to reword it now, assuming the council gives you the ability to reconsider.
So the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of the reconsideration, for reconsideration on previous motion made by Councilwoman Oladapo, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay. Aye.
Okay. It's getting late. All right. Let the record state that there was 7-0 on that motion and vote. Sorry. All right. Now, with that being said, I would like to entertain a motion from Councilwoman Oladapo.
All right. I make a motion to authorize the mayor to approve agreements for due diligence services for potential acquisition of land within the city-designated urban redevelopment area within the parameters of the spending plan.
She didn't say.
She didn't like it.
Well, she didn't need to say "any" now because we designated the area.
Right.
I second.
All right. The motion has been properly seconded by Councilwoman Davis. All those in favor of the motion just made by Councilwoman Oladapo, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
I'm going to oppose just because I'm not sure what the change was. I didn't, it doesn't matter if I'm right. No.
So let the record state it was 6-1. Six said affirmative, one to the negative was Councilwoman Ock. All right. I do believe that concludes all the business in front of us, just covered Item 16A and 16B. With that being said, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I want, motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion's been made and properly seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Jeffcoat. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Thank you. We stand adjourned.